Item number seven, applicant San Mateo County Training Director, file number PLN 2003-00438. Consideration of the Midcoast LCP Update Project. Task three, recalculate the infrastructure capacity necessary to serve Midcoast buildout. And task seven, reevaluate Midcoast traffic mitigation requirements.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, good evening. Tonight's meeting is devoted to discussing tasks three and seven of the Midcoast LCP Update Project. Specifically, task three calls for recalculating the infrastructure capacity necessary to serve Midcoast buildout. And task seven calls for reevaluating Midcoast transportation mitigation, traffic mitigation requirements. Beginning with task three, this involves determining how much water, sewer, and roadway capacity will be needed to serve LCP buildout. It also involves projecting how much of that needed capacity will likely to be available at buildout. Starting with water supply, there are two water service providers for the unincorporated Midcoast. First, there is Coastide County Water District, which serves the Midcoast generally south of Heflin Bay Airport, including Miramar, Princeton, and El Granada. Secondly, there is the Montero Water and Sanitary District, which serves the area generally north of Heflin Bay Airport, including Moss Beach and Montero. The staff report goes into much detail with calculations and capacity methodology and laying out the assumptions and all of the data collection and analysis that went into preparing this task. What I'll try to do tonight is just summarize the main points. I'm going to start first with the Coastide County Water District. The Coastide County Water District's portion of the Midcoast, which I indicated, is generally south of Heflin Bay Airport. For that area, we determined that the average demand at buildout would be approximately 1.19 million gallons per day. We also determined that the district's existing annual capacity for this area is 1.13 billion gallons per day on a normal year and 0.79 million gallons per day on a drought year. When comparing the district's existing water capacity with projected demand, we found that absent any improvements or new water sources, there would be a 5% shortfall on a normal year and a 34% shortfall on a drought year. Now, this was a calculation based on annual average demand. But as we all know, there are some very high temperature days during the summer. And there's also a calculation that occurs called peak day demand. And peak day water consumption is generally 1.8 times the annual average consumption. And Coastide County Water District, through its reports, has indicated that it has measures in place to respond to peak day demand, such as water storage and coundance. And now, I'll go to the other water supply service provider, which is the Montero Water and Sanitary District. For the Montero Water and Sanitary District portion of the Midcoast, as I indicated, is generally north of Heflin Bay Airport. We determined that average demand at buildout would be approximately 0.9 million gallons per day. We also determined that the district's annual, existing annual capacity is 0.51 million gallons per day on a normal year and 0.36 million gallons per day on a drought year. When comparing the district's existing water capacity with projected demand, we find, again, absent any improvements or new water sources, that there would be a 48% shortfall on a normal year and 63% shortfall on a drought year at buildout. I should note that additional water sources are being investigated, and if successfully developed, they could lower the district's shortfall at buildout to about 11% on a normal year and 38% on a drought year. So that would be the best case if there were improvements. Again, as I indicated with the Coastide County, with all of the calculations that I've just described for an annual average, when looking again at a peak day demand, the shortfall would increase. The amount of shortfall would depend on whether it's a normal year or a drought year and if new water sources are developed, just because we're talking to the future and buildout. At best, the shortfall would be 48% on a normal year with new water sources, or at worst, 78% on a drought year without new water sources. Next, we looked at wastewater treatment capacity for which the service provider is Service Authority Midcoast Side, SAM, and SAM operates its treatment facility in Heflin Bay. We have determined that the Midcoast demand for wastewater treatment at buildout will be approximately 1.53 million gallons per day. We also determined that SAM's existing treatment capacity is 1.71 million gallons per day for the Midcoast portion of its service area. When comparing the district's existing capacity with projected demand, we find that there will be a 12% treatment capacity surplus at buildout. However, I should note that there is a distinction between dry weather flow and wet weather flow. And while the SAM facility may be capable of treating Midcoast sewage at buildout, the agency's wet weather transportation, excuse me, transmission capability may not be adequate without significant improvements. And to this end, SAM is currently refurbishing and financing a major tank and pump station. Next, we looked at roadway capacity, particularly State Highway 1, going up and down the coast, and State Highway 92 connecting with the Midcoast at the Bayside. The relationship between roadway capacity and traffic volume is typically expressed as a level of service or LOS measure. As shown on the screen in the left column, the 2000 LOS measure for most congested segments of highways 1 and 92 during peak hours was E. Service level E is generally characterized by forced traffic flow, intersection approach delays, low average speeds, and low average speeds that may drop to zero. The projected 2010 service levels during peak afternoon hours were based on a travel forecasting model and are shown in the right column. This projection assumes the Delos Light Tunnel and certain improvements on Highway 92 will be in place. As can be seen, in 2010, the most congested sections of the road will be at service level F, except for the stretch of highway from El Granada to Montero, which would be at service level E. Level of service F is where roadway demand exceeds its capacity and is characterized by forced traffic flow and speeds frequently dropping to zero. In other words, unstable stomago conditions on his grid line. I should note that there are additional planned and funded highway improvements that were not assumed in the 2010 projection. These are new Highway 1 travel lanes for portions of Pacifica, then new Highway 92, alignment and shoulder improvements from Heflin Bay to, from Heflin Bay to those two groups. In concluding task three, portion of my, the task three portion of my presentation, both staff and the Midcoast Community Council recommend that your commission accept the data as a correct estimate of projected infrastructure demand and capacity based on the current available information. As indicated in the staff report, the Midcoast Community Council also recommends that the county complete hydrological studies to determine available Midcoast water resources and the county limit growth to that level the available resources can support. Now, I'd like to move on to task seven, which calls on reevaluating Midcoast traffic mitigation requirements. For this task, we primarily looked at two existing road mitigation programs. One, CK's Traffic Mitigation Program, which is part of the County Congestion Manager Plan, County Congestion Management Programs, et cetera. And secondly, the county's Road Mitigation Fee Ordinance, which is administered by the Department of Public Works. In terms of background, the State County Association of Governments, or CK, has adopted guidelines requiring that all jurisdictions in the county mitigate traffic impacts from new development located in the county's primary road network. And highways 92, 1 and 92 are in this county road network. The CK guidelines apply to all development that generate 100 or more additional trips per hour anytime during peak periods. The guidelines require mitigating the impact of the added trips caused by the development. Mitigation may involve one of three forms: establishing transportation demand management measures, known as TDMs; collecting road mitigation fees, or three, paying a one-time fee of $20,000 per peak hour trip. I made reference to TDMs or Transportation Demand Management Measures. These could include establishing a shuttle service, subsidizing transit for employees, charging for parking, establishing a carpool or vanpooling program, having a compressed work week, providing bicycle storage facilities and showers, or establishing a daycare program. That is one of many, those are several of many TDMs that have been devised. Members of the Midcoast community have argued that a downside of the CK requirement is that it only applies to developments that generate 100 or more added trips and not smaller development that cumulatively generates more trips. So if you take the smaller development in the aggregate, you'll have more trips that are not being mitigated according to, I'm not going to say not being mitigated at all, but not being mitigated pursuant to the CK requirements. Our analysis indicates that few individual Midcoast development projects will add 100 or more commute hour trips. These would include the development of the three affordable housing sites, possibly industrial office development on Airport Boulevard, and commercial development of several large sites near Airport Harbor. Otherwise, the CK traffic mitigation requirements will not apply to most of the Midcoast development, even though cumulatively they generate real traffic impacts. Regarding mitigation fees, in 1991, the county adopted the county's mitigation fee ordinance to collect mitigation fees for development for county public road and drainage facility maintenance and improvement. Fees are collected throughout the county for seven geographic areas, including the Midcoast, and fees collected in a particular area must be spent in that area. So fees that are collected in the Midcoast must be spent in the Midcoast. Fees are collected on a square footage basis, ranging from $1.35 for residential development, $1.35 per square foot, to $2.70 per square foot for commercial office development. Although these fees could be used to improve state highways 1 and 92, to date, the fees have only been used to fund county road maintenance and improvements, county projects for road maintenance and improvements. The Department of Public Works indicates that road mitigation fees are intended to be used for four upcoming road and drainage improvements in the four county roads within the Midcoast. Upcoming projects will include improvements for portions of Canoff Street and portions of Fourth Street in Montero, also improvements for a portion of Cypress Streets, Cypress Street in Moss Beach, and a portion of Marotta Road in Miramar. So these are county road improvement projects that are on the horizon, that are intended to be funded by the county mitigation, county's mitigation fee ordinance. I'd also like to note at this point that the county Transportation Authority, that its staff has proposed a project to widen Highway 1 from two to four lanes, including left turn lanes, signals, and medians, from Miramontes Road in Heflin Bay to Capistrano Road in El Granada. This may be placed on a future ballot measure to reauthorize Measure A, which is the county's half sales, a half-cent sales tax road and transportation improvement program. So basically, the Transportation Authority, which is the legislative body that has a function, whose single function is to administer the projects that were adopted as part of Measure A, the half-cent sales tax, their staff is proposing a project to widen Highway 1 from two to four lanes from, Miramontes Road to Capistrano Road as a future reauthorization of Measure A, and that would be, that could be on a future ballot measure. For this task, we raise several policy questions. One, is it appropriate for the county to apply the CK guidelines to development that generates less than 100 trips at peak hour? Basically, as I indicated, the existing CK guidelines only apply to development that generates 100 or more added trips during peak hour. So we're raising the policy question, would it be appropriate to apply those requirements to certain development, to development that generates less than 100 trips per hour at buildout? How are 100 trips at any time during peak hour? Another question is, to ask at this point is, would it be appropriate for the county to use road mitigation fees or increase the amount that's collected for road mitigation fees to pay for improvements on state highways? So there's basically two parts to that question. Should the county use the road mitigation fees that it's been collecting up to date and historically been used on county roads for improvements on state highways, and should more money be collected to do that? Regarding the last question, if the county were to use mitigation fees to fund state highway road projects, these must be for improvements that are directly adjacent to the fee collection area. As such, the fees cannot be used to fund Highway 92 improvements, because that's not directly adjacent to the Midcoast, but could be used to fund improvements to Highway 1 located next to the Midcoast or within the Midcoast. In addition, county council has advised that if road mitigation fees were to be used to fund projects on Highway 1, or that there was an increase for that purpose, a study would be required to meet certain legal tests related to the mitigation ordinance, also county council would need to determine if and when ordinance amendments are necessary. So, and this leads us to the options that we discussed at the workshop that we held throughout last year. One of the workshops was on task seven, I think it was last June. We were discussing the four options that are shown on the screen, and I've provided some background and analysis that lead to these options. Option one could be, would be the status quo, not change anything. That would mean continue to require mitigation fees for use on local roads and continue to apply the CK guidelines to projects, they're called CK guidelines, but it's a requirement. It's a guideline, it's a requirement, to projects that add 100 or more peak trips. So that's a different situation than status quo. The second option is to increase road mitigation fees for use on state Highway 1, improvement projects that are adjacent to the Midcoast. The third option would be to expand on the CK guidelines or extend the CK guidelines to smaller projects that add less than 100 peak hour trips and are not exempt from CEQA. The reason we added this last bit, by extending to projects that are less than 100, that add less than 100 peak hour trips. This would lower the trigger to projects that are smaller than 100, but it also would, but by having the provision that are not exempt for CEQA would also exempt very, very small projects from, so it would be projects somewhere between maybe be less than 100 but greater than 10 or whatever. I'll give you an example. Projects that would be exempt from CEQA would be a single-family residence or a commercial operation, that a business that's 2,500 square foot floor area or smaller. So basically, with option number three, it would be requiring the mitigation, requiring the traffic mitigation requirements of, that are in the CK guidelines, to projects that are less, that generate less than 100 added trips at peak hour, but exempting from small projects on single-family residences and small commercial businesses that are 2,500 square feet or smaller. The fourth option was to study the feasibility of expanding shuttle service between the Midcoast and the Bayside. At the workshop of the, because, I'll put it this way, at the workshop, most participants endorsed these four options, and later via a letter from the Midcoast Community Council, there was endorsement of these options. The council also has added recommendations. The council recommends that the road mitigation fees be used also as matching funds or grants to a funding program known as the Local Transit Alternatives Fund Program, which emphasized funding and shuttle projects. Also, as you may have noticed in the staff report, the Department of Public Works has submitted comments on these proposals. In summary, Public Works is concerned that if mitigation fees were used to finance Highway 1 improvements, Caltrian may come to always rely on local funding for state highway projects, which in turn could delay such projects. That's one of Department of Public Works' concerns. The Public Works Department also has a concern that there may be some legal limitations in using road mitigation fees as much in funds for local transit alternatives, which was proposed by the Midcoast Community Council. So this brings us down to the staff recommendation and the conclusion of my presentation. And so what I will go over with you is the staff recommendation. Staff recommendation for task three is to accept the updated data as an accurate estimate of the construction for water supply, sewer treatment, and roadway capacity necessary to serve Midcoast buildout based on the current available information. The second point is direct acceptance or adjust data if there are, through this project, policy changes that have caused data to be revised. This is the same one that we used for the buildout last time, buildout data. Regarding task seven, which I just discussed relates to traffic mitigation measures, our proposal is to, our recommendation is to continue to require mitigation fees for local roads and apply the CK guidelines for projects that are greater than 100 peak hour trips. So keep the status quo, but then add on to it, consider increasing mitigation fees for state Highway 1 improvements that are located in the Midcoast. Also add on, relate to the CK guidelines, require transportation demand TDM measures for projects that generate less than 100 peak hour trips and not exempt from CEQA. As I indicated, these would be smaller projects, but not so small as a single-family house or small commercial business. And then the last element of our proposal, our recommendation is to study expanding shuttle service between the Midcoast and the Bayside. So that would conclude my staff presentation. Thank you, George. Gentlemen, questions at this time, or no?
Actually, I think you have. I can't even talk to you.
Okay.
I sure hope he didn't say this and I didn't hear it. I'm looking at the roadway capacity chart, and there's some grayed out areas where we don't have data. Is that because we don't have data?
Are you talking about the roadway segments?
Yeah.
No, that's not, well, I'll give you the answer. These were from two different sources. The two different sources used different roadway segments. So the 2001 source, well, they both used Highway 92, 1 to Highway 28.
Right.
But let's jump down to the one below it. The 2001 Miramontes Road to Frenchman's Creek, but the 2010, the Miramontes Road to El Granada, which is just beyond Frenchman's Creek, and includes that stretch from Frenchman's Creek. So basically, these were two studies that were non-aligned, and they happened to choose different segments, but they covered the same area.
Okay, we still left with the Granada to Montero, Montero to Pacifica aren't covered, right?
There were Frenchman's Creek to Pacifica.
Oh, okay, right, I got it.
Okay.
Great, thank you. This evening, I've made a unilateral decision, as I've done in the past. We're going to allow the MCC3, Triple C3, we'll get it right there, Midcoast Community Council. Since they're going to give us an overview on their thoughts, I've allowed them 10 minutes to do so. And then that'll be Paul Burkett and then Sandy Emerson. I think that should do it, but allow Sandy 10 minutes also. Then we'll go to the individual speakers. Hopefully, we won't have any repetitious comments by the individual speakers. As I promised, is that correct?
I can't enforce the discipline, but I will attempt.
Rightly, Wilson.
Did you make an announcement at the beginning of the meeting that you would like people who wish to speak to fill out the speaker slips and present them so you have a count?
Do we have that on the board? Is it, anyway, I've seen people do this, people have done that. I have something like 13, I believe, do leave. That's a terrible number, we'll say 14. I would like to give five minutes. Let's give everybody their due, I think five minutes is fair, I'm going to be fair, hopefully.
I tried to be agree for the unusual tonight because we have a number of other people in the audience.
Thank you.
First of all, Chairman Kennedy and members of the Commission, my name's Paul Burkett, I live in Montero, and speaking right now as Chair of Midcoast Community Council. Sandy Emerson is going to speak next, was chair up until the middle of the summer during the period when the council completed its work on the analysis of our responses to George's work, and got the letter off, which you have all seen copies of. First of all, in terms of the recommendations George mentioned, the council's recommendations on task three essentially supported staff's recommendations with the exception that we had a third recommendation, which is that the county complete the hydrological and other studies that determine the available resources for the community and limit growth to the number of building units and population that the water resources can support. I'd like to add a caveat, this is, I've done this in collateral decision, but I'd like to add a caveat to our first two recommendations on behalf of the council, which was to accept the projected demand and capacity figures as correct estimates based on the available data. And as you recall, after meeting two weeks ago, we discussed buildout projections, and the MCC and the County Council has generally concurred with George's work in that area. However, built into that is the expectation that under the task on lot merger, your commission will recommend, as you have done, and the Board of Supervisors will carry out the lot merger program. The staff projection was that the total buildout population would be up, according to my numbers, about 18% over the 1980 LCP estimates. Whereas, if, if the lot merger does not go into effect, and one of the speakers at the last meeting suggested that the numbers should have been presented without lot merger, and then show the effect of bringing those down, the increase would be from about 16,000 as a buildout population to more than 25,000, which was, which was almost a 54% increase, I believe. So the caveat is, the council had endorsed the analysis of the data based on the buildout projections and the expectations the lot merger would occur, and that's an very important Secondly, in our findings, we discussed how the 1980 LCP water and sewer estimate seemed to have been somewhat higher than current usage, and to a large extent, it's good that we have conservation in the community, and that has helped us get through some of the water problems over the years. Water is the most critically limiting natural resource for land uses. There are a number of people from the Montero Water and Sanitary District who I believe are going to talk more about water. I would like to make a couple of observations. The local coastal program and The local coastal program anticipates that urban development will be, will occur using a public water and sewer system that does not anticipate that there will be significant development on private wells. The mid-coast or the Montero-Monterey Beach area was served by a private water company, a private-owned water company, that had been under a Public Utilities Commission connection moratorium order since 1986 due to inadequate supplies. In fact, the order required about 200 gallons per minute additional water supply before that moratorium was lifted. The Montero Water and Sanitary District has only taken over operations of the water system since August 1st of this year. So the staff report is correct, and that local special district is now responsible for the water system, but you shouldn't read the shortfall and the various problems associated with the water supply being the fault of the local public agency, but rather than the prior industrial utilities. There's been a lot of development using wells because of that moratorium. When a well was put in, the county requires that it can deliver two and a half gallons per minute with adequate water quality. Two and a half gallons per minute turns out to be about four acre-feet a year, and if you had 100 domestic wells pumping at the tested capacity, they would use about as much water as the entire 1,680 customers who are connected to the public water supply. Now, of course, most people who are in wells don't pump the two and a half gallons per minute. However, if you drive around the community, you see some areas that have very lush green lawn and others that have more coastal native grasses. And typically, the ones that are on lawns that has a lush green lawn are the ones that are on wells. At a time when there's an overall issue of water supply, we do not have accurate data based on reading of the well usage, on how much water has been withdrawn by well users, and it may very well be significantly different than the average household use for the folks who are connected to the public system, which has had fairly high water prices. This has also led to certain, there's a certain resentment of some of the well owners from other people in the community who have gotten stage-three water alerts, have been told they can't irrigate their own landscaping, they can't wash their cars, things like that. So finding a solution that gets the entire community on a public water system would be fair to everyone, or hoping to be in the direction. You might wonder, when you look at the numbers in George's report on the amount of production available now versus the build-out demand, obviously, we're not in build-out yet, why do we have these water alerts? And I thought an analogy might help. I have a friend who invited me to go jogging with him tonight. Usually, when I go jogging, I can cover a mile in about 10 minutes, so that's six miles per hour. You can compute that rate pretty accurately. That's what Citizens Utilities does when they pump water out of wells. They compute how many gallons per minute they get while they're pumping. However, if you take six miles per hour as my rate of running, and say they're 24 hours in a day, therefore, Paul can run 144 miles in a day, you've made a leap of faith that is not borne out in reality. And we have the same problem when we look at the well data. Yes, when the wells have not been used recently, and all of them are pumped at the same time, they can produce 357 gallons per minute, or whatever the number is in the report, varies from year to year. However, those are not sustainable rates for long term. Each of the wells, there are few water sources that can run continuously during the month, but most of the wells have to be cycled, and some of the wells, you have drawdown, and if the water level's drawn down too much, that well has to either be throttled back in terms of its production capability, or turned off until the water level recovers. So first of all, you can't do a straight extrapolation from the peak production capacity to, that's not a sustainable annual production capacity. Secondly, a number of the wells that serve the mid-coast in the northern area are, I mean, our Ford's well field, which is under Coastal Commission restrictions on the total extraction that can occur there. And we share that limit with Coastside County Water District to the south, and that limits the amount. So even if, when they're running, those wells can produce 60 or 75 or 80 gallons per minute, you can't run them year-round at that rate or at the extraction level of the region. So just take with a grain of salt the percentages of shortfalls. The bad news is, the real numbers will be even worse once we can analyze them more thoroughly, but you've got the significant idea that we need a great deal more in terms of local water supply. I don't want to say anymore about water right now, because, as I said, there are other speakers who will address that. I did put a graph together, but I didn't get it on an overhead. This gives you an idea of the cyclical nature of water demand. In the Montero-Monterey Beach District, water demand varies from about eight and a half million gallons during the low-water usage months by January and February to a peak of around 14 million gallons a month. So there's a significant variation from the low-usage period to the high-usage period. And I was now going to turn over the remaining time to Sandy Emerson. Sandy hadn't shared, as I said, up until the middle of the summer, and she's new to address the road issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I'm Sandy Emerson. I live in El Granada. And I wanted to just give you a little background for the MCC recommendations on the road issues and the traffic issues, which in large part, staff has supported in its recommendations. We are set five communities along Highway One, and you can't get from one community to the next without using Highway One. So for the mid-coast, Highway One is a local road, and it's part of our local traffic pattern. On the other hand, we don't want to make the kind of bargain that would make changes to Highway One that would actually sort of increase the problem rather than alleviate it. The news about the proposed widening of Highway One from Miramontes Road and Half Moon Bay to Capistrano and El Granada for two to four lanes, et cetera, is not necessarily good news. What we're interested in with the increased mitigation fees is actually providing an alternative to Highway One for local traffic. This would be the multimodal trail that would be parallel to Highway One and the very generous Caltrans right-of-way largely east of Highway One, where that right-of-way is large enough. And this would be a pedestrian and bicycle-friendly means of avoiding Highway One. We're also interested in providing alternatives to traffic lights. The circulation plan for Half Moon Bay, the only kind of improvement for a safe crossing is seems a traffic light, but in the mid-coast, there are a number of opportunities to provide safe crossings below the grade level of the highway and in other means. So our tendency with the recommendations for increasing mitigation fees and redirecting them wherever possible to include Highway One improvements are for the multimodal trail and safe crossings and other things that provide alternatives to using cars. With this issue of the need for fees for projects that generate less than 100 trips at peak hours. The infill project building, the housing development on the mid-coast of late is about 50 large houses per year that definitely will have at least two cars, and the cumulative impact is well over 100 trips. So we need to include that recommendation to require transportation demand management measures for products, projects that generate less than 100 feet per hour trips as well. The recommendation we have to use collective fees as a match for the Local Transportation Alternatives Fund was an attempt to piggyback on that fund that could make commuting alternatives to cars available for the mid-coast residents. In general, you see the level of service that we are now enjoying, and it's not going to get any better. With our local road, Highway One, we have an opportunity to alleviate congestion by taking advantage of a multimodal trail and safe crossings. And I expect and hope that these will be proposed as projects for the Measure Eight reauthorization. That would be, that will be something that we very much like to see, and it makes perfect sense with the rest of our recommendations. I think that's, I'm a, sir.
Have there been any, have there been any studies done of the effect that a multimodal trail might have on, I mean, how would it affect the overall traffic problem?
I'm not aware of any studies. I do know that Half Moon Bay is putting in a multimodal trail, or has that in the works now, with the assistance of Nurseryman's Exchange and the other, and some of the other businesses along Highway One. There are an awful lot of people who must commute by foot or by bicycle, and the multimodal trail would keep them safe. I don't know exactly how many cars it would save.
Thank you. Thank you, Colonel. Any other questions? Thank you so very much. Karen Wilson, followed by Jim Harvey.
Hi, my name is Karen Wilson. I'm a resident in Montero. I guess it was good timing. I wanted to talk about schools in relationship to Task Three and Task Seven. When the roadway capacity tests were taken, we did have school transportation available, school busing was provided. That no longer is available on the mid-coast, making the school commute up to 10 miles. The LCP currently doesn't consider placement of new school facilities or calculate vehicle traffic as it relates to morning and peak travel, and the impacts of school traffic including the discontinued, discontinued school buses and planning for future build-out in terms of traffic availability in educational facilities. So part of that trail could be used for children who have no other way to get to school. Roughly, half of CUSD's, the Cabrillo Unified School District's enrollment is from the mid-coast, and that would, that's likely to increase. Right now, that means that over 450 middle schools and 600 high school students commute between the mid-coast and Half Moon Bay every day. That's over 1,000 extra trips per morning and afternoon, and they tend to be worse than regular commuters as they're traveling both directions at the same time. It's critical that any traffic planning considers, considers school traffic explicitly, especially in the absence of school busing or the foreseeable future. School kids are ideal candidates for public transit, and whatever can be done to facilitate or assist the district in providing public transportation for children. The provision of student transportation is a community interest and should be, and shouldn't be just left to the school district who regard it as a simple, simple cost burden. The CUSD facility's master plan, which I gave some quotes from earlier on this document, there's some actual quotes inside here, from their, their plan, does contemplate building a second middle school as a local demand. The facility's master plan, however, doesn't say that it should be on the mid-coast, but we do suggest that that is part of our continued future planning for growth. That would also help them to manage traffic and all of those things that go with it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Jim Harvey, followed by Chuck Wilson.
My name is Jim Harvey. I'm from Montero. I'm a member of the Montero Water and Sanitary District. As you know, our district's just purchased the water system in Calham. In the process, is making purchase of pairs in the system, as the system that is used is still in time, as well as we're looking for resources of water. We're soon to be drilling the seven roots wells at the base of Montero Mountain. The, as you know, the Sanatia County Board of Supervisors has a well, an aquifer study going on, and that study is to be completed in two years. In the meantime, if new private wells are allowed to be drilled in that, in that time, these capacities mentioned in this report will have, for some, not much meaning, because with, there are a couple hundred, 300 wells, private wells now, and if there are more wells in the next two years, then these water capacities mentioned in the report will be kind of meaningless. So I would suggest, in order to protect the district, the new Montero Water and Sanitary District, and to also to protect the, the wells that are already dug, the private wells that this, this board, or Board of Supervisors consider slowing down or stopping, allowing the wells to be dug. So the point is that, in summary, of the, the new, the well, the private wells, we change all this data and make it meaningless. Thank you.
Chuck, followed by Jack Foley.
Good evening, Commissioners. Chuck Coetzac from Montero, on behalf of the Mid Coast Council. I can keep it fairly brief, because I think they'll be able to deal with the, handle a lot of the technicalities. But I did want to talk a little bit about this process. I think we're, we're not looking at an exercise in which we're trying to figure out some way to stretch the infrastructure to fit some maximum or higher level of build-out, but we're trying to find what we need in a way of infrastructure to support a planned build-out that's in accordance with the Coastal Act, which has a balance of supporting our communities, providing the needed level of visitor serving, and protecting our coastal environmental resources. We've got quite a ways to go through this process before we can make any decisions on, on hard numbers, but this topic is a very important keystone. The staff report has shown that we've got a number of deficiencies in water and sewer capacity. We've got traffic coming to gridlock within seven years. We have a major hydrological study underway. We have no master plan for Highway One, which was something we're hoping to get out of this process. We have master plans for our school districts, for the Harvard District and the Arab Board that are out of date and are needing updating, and we will need to consider how these processes all come out in order to determine the cumulative impacts on infrastructure that this is all going to have. But in the end, I think we need to consider, most importantly above all, the protection of coastal resources in our community when we're planning for build-out levels and for the infrastructure to support them. I support the recommendations that the Mid Coast Council has, and I think these are a start of the sort of integrated planning that's needed to reach those goals. So, thank you.
Chuck. Jack Foley, followed by Chuck Governor.
Good evening. Good evening. I'd like to get a few overheads ready before I start. My name is Jack Foley. I'm the manager with the Sewer Authority Mid Coast side, and I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to speak. I arrived earlier, heard staff presentation, and I was pleased with some of what I heard. I'd like to start by pointing out that the first bullet under regarding Task Three says, "Accept the updated data as an accurate estimate of infrastructure, water supplies, sewer treatment, and roadway." The presentation, we wanted to talk about the water supply at build-out for Coastside County Water District, and then touched on water supply build-out for the Montero Water and Sanitary District, and then touched on my agency, the wastewater treatment capacity and build-out for Sewer Authority Mid Coast side. And then there was an oral report, let's say that's the oral report, covering the wastewater wet weather transmission capacity. That was mentioned. And the staff report says that SAM's wet weather transmission capacity may not be adequate to serve such development without significant improvements. Specified improvements that SAM is currently undertaking to remedy this problem include refurbishing a Montero water tank, enhancing the Portola pump station. Well, that's true. SAM has embarked on a several-year, several-million-dollar capital improvement project to make those improvements. And now, if I could come back to this, SAM is concerned that maybe the commission, data, the data provided to the commission does not include the wet weather transmission capacity information, and I don't know whether that has been included. If it's not included, SAM staff is available to work with the staff in the county in including that data. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so very kindly.
Hi, I'm Chuck Duffy from the Nona Sanitary District, the manager there. We're obviously a member agency of SAM and we work with Jack Foley. I just want to reiterate his comments on the transmission capacities. That's touched upon in the LCP update, but I'm not sure it goes quite far enough to describing the point we're at right now, which is, it uses the words, "The capacity may not be adequate." I guess that's true. It may not be adequate. It's marginal right now. As you can tell, we have problems with the Portola pump station during severe wet weather events, you know, it's overflowed now. We're working to alleviate partially through construction of the Montero water tank. But I also want to point out that when the Portola pump station overflows, it overflows out of our manholes and we're not. So we are the direct recipient, if you will, of this thing. So I want to make sure that everyone understands the importance of this transmission capacity issue. The treatment capacity is there. No one's arguing that. It's the transmission capacity, and much needs to be done to upgrade that, like Jack said, multi-million dollar effort. And I'd also like to point out maybe a factual thing on your report that the Montero water tank, first of all, has to be renamed, and second of all, it's completed that project, and that there are other projects that will be going forward, hopefully resolving some of these overflow issues. And they just mentioned the Portola pump station. Actually, the project is not even started yet. I'm not sure it's been approved yet, so. But I'd just like to reiterate, it's transmission capacity issue is key here. I think it needs to be explored more fully in this report. Thank you.
One more. What is the, what is the limitation? Is it funding?
There's a, there's a funding issue in Corolo, partial funding. Corolo Engineers did a study that I think totaled up to nine million dollars in improvements necessary to bring that pipeline up to size. There's also conflicts potentially with Major A and, you know, I'd have to get the engineer to report it here to really get it to beat that, but those are some of the issues.
I have to ask just a general, a little, not pessimism, a little bit of optimism in the future, do you think? Do you think we're going to see this? Are we projecting something way down the bike?
That's worth it.
Yeah, putting you on the spot.
You couldn't pick on a jack, huh?
No, I'm just fun as the second guy around.
No, I mean, we just completed the Walker tank six months ago, and the Portola pump station was on the project this, for this year, has been pulled for more review and engineering reasons. Yeah, we're doing what we can to resolve this because obviously, like I said, it backs up in our backyard, so we're in the right position.
That's what prompted the question.
Right.
Nothing personal, sewage backup.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you kindly. Leonard Warren, I'm going to, and after that, James Ben.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm the following, Sam Manager and then the TSD Manager. Second thing I've written down is on that. But the first thing, I want to, once again, raise the issue on record that this whole process is a tail wagging the dog. The way this should be done is to compute what the carrying capacity of the Coastside is and then adjust the land use to fit that, not the way it's being done, which is to look at the current zoning and say, "Well, this is how much development we're going to have, so this is how much infrastructure we need." And all planning textbooks and state law require that you adjust the zoning to match the government plan. Not the other way around. I hope that this is not news to you. One, the only comment I have on the SAM capacity, at least what I have written up at the top, is that SAM capacity also has to be considered in terms of capacity units that we call ERUs, we call the residential units. The sanitary districts have a fixed number of ERUs, and looking at just the gallonage rate of treatment capacity doesn't tell the whole picture. We cannot increase the number of ERUs that we got out of the planning staff. What we got is what we have forever. That's it. But touching on various other points throughout the report, you can't rely on, the statement is, "Could improve SAM Trans, SAM Trans service well." Maybe could, maybe can't, the county doesn't control SAM Trans, SAM Trans, SAM Trans doesn't really even know where the Coastside is. And there's no funding for it. SAM Trans has reduced rather than increased service over the years. And any improvements that the county could coerce them into making right now, they'll just cancel them again when times are tough. So you can't base any development scenarios on what SAM Trans might do. Regarding level of service of roads, do we have to be like LA, which sets the development target everywhere so that every road intersection is a LOS F? I don't think that should be our target. The appropriate maximum, which is what's mentioned in the report, is D. However, George's chart, which was up there, does not show the intersections. It only shows the road segments. And right now, during commute time, there are intersections that are at LOS F now. And my understanding of state law, and I haven't been able to find the reference, but at some point I'll turn it up, is that once, how do I want to state this? You basically can't approve any development at all that causes any level of service to change from E to F. I'm unclear on what that means when it's already at F, though. Regarding recommendation to D, I guess I'll just read what I wrote here, trying to find it. It suggests studying whether something can be done. Well, studying whether it's going to be done doesn't actually help anything. And so, again, you can't plan development based on what some study might show in the future. Regarding water capacity, water, the carrying capacity of Coastside, when you look at water, must be based on safe yield, not average yield. Most of this is totally ignoring the safe yield issue. And when you look at safe yields, the computed loadout is way, way over the safe yield, which, again, argues that we need to bring down the total development that will be allowed because any water that we import is going to be negatively impacting environments somewhere else. Any more local extraction and diversion is going to negatively impact the environment here, and there's a good chance that Department of Fish and Game isn't going to approve it anyway. Well, CCOBD is trying to, well, CCOBD is doing studies on that now, and I'm sure you'll hear from them. Their general managers here, their engineers here. And by the way, as a single data counterpoint to one of the things Paul said, I have a well model on dead. Oh, I missed something from the way I wrote it here. And when I was talking about the LOS F issues, the report says that you make the roads bigger when the level of service gets worse than D. But at what point do you say, "The roads are big enough. You can't keep making the roads bigger forever?" And by the way, I first got called in from the traffic level service issues in 1982, and the modeling at that time only went to a vehicle capacity ratio of .95. The models broke down. They didn't know what would happen above .95. And we're seeing on the charts that are supplied here, vehicle capacity ratios above 2.0. This is insanity. We cannot allow it to get anywhere near there. So I, as far as the recommendations go, I urge you to accept the TDM trip threshold to one, which CKA allowed. Anything to do, you can set it to any number from one to 100, so I would ask that you set it to one. And I agree with the Midcos Council's recommendations for Task Seven, and I'm not commenting on.
Thank you, Leonard. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you kindly. And Scott Boyd is next.
Good evening, gentlemen. It's an honor to be able to address you again. My name is Jimmy Benjamin. I'm currently the Chair of the Half Moon Bay Planning Commission, but I'm speaking to you tonight as an individual since the staff report on this item has not yet been reviewed, discussed by our planning commission. I ask that you consider these as a personal opinion, and I'm sure we'll follow up with some type of commission statement after we've had a chance to comment. I'll try not to repeat any of the comments that came up earlier, try to break up new things that might not have come up before. First, there was discussion of the allocation of demand between the Montero and Coastside County Water District. There was a reference in the text of the document saying that the allocation, I think it was 46 or 47% versus 53% George Harbor with those companies I'm talking about. And it said that it was based on the usage maps, and it wasn't clear to me exactly what that meant. I'm hoping that it's not simply taking the relative areas of the service districts and considering them to be proportional to demand because unusable land does not consume water. And if the allocation of how much water was required in the two areas was based solely on that, we'd be likely to create a growth inducing excess of capacity designation in one place and underestimate capacity in a different one. That would not serve anyone's interests. Second, I want to point out what I think might be inadvertent errors. The staff report indicated that there was a peak day usage, according to Coastside County Water District reports, of 20 days per year, and that was based on data over eight years according to the report. My recollection of that data is that in the entire eight-year period, there were eight days of peak water use. So it was in terms of a rate being mentioned when in fact the data was over the entire period, and the rate would have been more like two and a half to three days. So, you know, maybe I'm mistaken, but I, it would be something I'm respectfully asking to check. Third, I noticed that the estimates of water were based on the table 2.10 in the 1980 county LCP. And of course, we've had 23 years since that document was certified, more since it was drafted. I'm concerned that we are not making use of the water usage information that is available from the Coastside County Water District itself in their usage report. They go to link and tell you about water usage by different industrial, you know, by industrial, by commercial. These various categories are explicitly listed, and rather than going with estimates that are quite old, I think we would benefit from using the data that's actually been collected by the, by the Coastside County Water District. I won't repeat the concerns about safe yield that you heard earlier. I will just mention that the Half Moon Bay Planning Commission and City Council recently heard a presentation by a member of the Porcedos Creek Restoration Committee about the loss of, the health of that system as a result of so many straws getting stuck into the Pillars Dos Creek aquifer that has resulted in the erosion, the loss of a lagoon that supports endangered species out on the coast. So I share the concerns about what safe yield means. What may have been perceived in the past to be a safe yield may in fact not be a safe yield. So I ask you to consider that level is updated when you talk about what it means to have a safe yield, at least with respect to those wells. There were also references in the staff report to the extension of the NUNIS Treatment Plan capacity. And I would just caution, it wasn't mentioned in the report, but I'm sure the members of the water district who are here can confirm for you, that one of the conditions that the Coastal Commission attached to the NUNIS Treatment Plan was a strict limitation on the amount of horsepower, essentially the amount of water that could be treated. That was their way of checking the growth inducing impact on that plan. And I think that it would be unreasonable not to discuss that impact in the report. I urge you to take a good look at any assumptions you make that would be based on that, you know, the water district just being able to easily move that horsepower up to a higher level. The build-out numbers were wrong. You'll see the details in my report. It appears that the build-out horizon, some of the estimates were 40 or 50 years rather than 20 years, and the calculations that flowed from those had similar flaw. There were not references to Half Moon Bay's revised numbers, which I think there was an assumption of something like 1,400 additional build-out. That number should be halved. Half Moon Bay has measure D that's going to have a very narrow interest. The Coastal Commission has acknowledged our intention. It's time to use that information as you develop your assessment of what our capacity requirements are. If I could just be indulged for a moment, I'm trying to represent an institutional perspective here. There was reference to lot mergers increasing demand, and I respectfully would point out that lot mergers would only increase the demand on water if you routinely permit the construction and development on those lots, those substantial lots that are not merged. So in thinking about the impact of unsuccessful lot mergers, don't assume that you're automatically going to get increased demand because you have the option of saying that the property isn't buildable unless merged hers. There was a reference to Highway One being four lane over extended period. We know that the Coastal Commission has an interest in Highway One being two lane in scenic areas. I urge you to consider that as you think about the potential capacity of Highway One. The plan does not discuss coastal access, which is obviously going to be a major concern to the Coastal Commission. And to the extent that we have levels of service E and F in our, in our discussion and in our coast, the idea that we're going to improve a new plan that impedes people's ability to get in and out on the coast is, you might have found tonight on your way out here. I think that deserves discussion and careful consideration. I do compliment staff on including the diagram of vehicle capacity ratio that Leonard mentioned in his, in his final comments. The important thing to note about that document is that it assumes all of the projects that we've been talking about, that, you know, Highway 92 gets its four lanes and, you know, all of these magic, you know, that we could wave a wand and all of these projects could be completed. Even then, the capacity risks were described in that report. They're beyond theoretical limits. You can't have two cars in one place, and that's what a vehicle capacity ratio of two means. So very, very serious business. I agree about lowering the, the impact mitigation ceiling from 100. That's strictly a generic number. You have absolutely all the power you need as local agency as Half Moon Bay does to reduce that level to a much more level. I think one is very reasonable. The impacts in staff's report were described as being difficult to mitigate if there wasn't a nexus to the source of the fee. That is, if the fee was collected from something local, there'd be some limit to your ability to spend the money on some project that wasn't right next by, next, next door. But I just want to emphasize that decisions that you make about development do impact the area that's far away from it. The impacts happen dramatically, and we need to find a way to acknowledge and mitigate those impacts in the course of this discussion. So I ask you to find ways to mitigate impacts that are not immediately adjacent to development in the course of this discussion. The details are in my letter. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so very kindly, Jimmy. Scott Boyd, and April Vargas is next.
Good evening. Thank you, Commissioners, for braving the fog and the dark of night. My name is Scott Boyd. I am a Director of the Montero Water and Sanitary District. I just handed out to you a copy of our most recent newsletter, kind of helped bring me up to speed a little bit on some of our more recent developments. I'm sure you're aware that I'm just recently taking, taking over the session and operation of the water system in Montero and Mont Beach. We've just had it for a few weeks, but we're already well on our way to take care of some long-standing problems. As you're probably aware, we've had a water supply deficiency that has resulted in a water connection hookup moratorium for over 25 years. That deficit, depending on which numbers you look at, range anywhere from 161 to 250 gallons per minute. And to put that into perspective, our reliable capacity, as stated in our water supply, water supply study that we did jointly back in '99 with the State Department of Water Resources, shows our reliable capacity of 3.10. Deficit 250, reliable capacity 3.10. This is a substantial deficit, and it's resulted in some pretty serious problems for our community. Angst between neighbors who have wells and don't have wells is just the death of the iceberg. Just this summer alone, we had, we had to stand down at the Coast Office and ask people to stop all outdoor watering because our 25 And the good news is, we live in a great community, and once we got the word out, within a matter of hours, the levels in the tank started going back up. We can deal with these things, but we are marginal right now, and this is a serious health and safety concern. We need to address that deficit on our way to meeting some of the demand for build-out. We also have three-hundred-and-fifty, roughly three-hundred-and-fifty homes on wells now. So please keep in mind that as we address the deficit, the deficit is for the people who are already hooked up. So once we provide that additional two-hundred-and-fifty gallons a minute, we'll be even with what the current users need. Even though the three-hundred-and-fifty on top of that, many of whom would like to hook up to municipal system, we don't need three-hundred-and-fifty independent well operators who are responsible for maintaining the health of the well, maintaining the integrity of the casing and the treatment of water that comes out, the testing on a regular basis. I've been asking neighbors, "How often do you treat your, or how often do you test your well water?" And I don't like the answers I'm hearing. I'm hearing answers like, "Oh, I've never done that." Three-hundred-and-fifty wells, what are the odds that each one of those people is really in a good position to spend the time and have the training to properly care for that well? We have on our staff people who, on a daily basis, maintain and operate and test our wells, our pumps. Getting the municipal system to where we can deal with it for the needs of the entire community is a pretty important job for us. So please keep in mind, the deficiency is for the people currently on the system. On top of that, we have the additional need, I believe, to hook up the people who are on wells now, or at least the ones that we can entice in. I don't think we have a brickbat to take to them, but I think we can find ways to help people, at least the ones who want to come into the system, to be on a more reliable, more constantly maintained and tested system. And for the health and safety of our community, I think, just given the large number of people, that's something we've really got to try to find ways to deal with. As has been mentioned, we are drilling wells. We hope to start drilling some wells within the next month, up to four this year. These are test wells. They're part of groundwater management study that we're doing. It'll be a multi-year project. We've got some state grant money to do that with. But we hope to, those initially, and more after the rainy season, and to take a small number of those to prove out well. And I'm sure some of them will. We're working with the Department of Water Resources ground supply study. We came up with some very good, very likely places. We have arrangements in place now with people who own those properties, so we should be able to turn these into producing wells rapidly. We're talking within a year, four to months. So I have little doubt that we can get to the point where we can serve the existing community and take care of some of the additional growth that is bound to occur. The wells, though, as has been mentioned, there's a well study that the county's doing now, but we've got to say it's a wild card right now. If you'll indulge me, please. It's a wild card. We really don't know what all those wells are doing to the water supply in our area. We really just don't, we just don't know. So we need to get a lot more information on what's actually happening. We're all working for the same shared set of resources. And in the Bay Area, as I'm sure you're aware, supplies are tight. And Redwood City, for example, has now started using recycled water from their sewer plant to do irrigation, lawn watering, most kind of things. Supplies are tight, and they're being told that they're using too much of the hetch-etchy water, and that's going to be cut back to what they were actually allocating. They're not going to be able to get away with overdrawing that anymore. The ability for us to look outside of our district while we're looking at all those options, and this study does go into that, those options seem to be literally drying up in front of us. Being on the tail end of the hetch-etchy system isn't exactly a desirable place to be either in terms of cost. And so we're looking first and foremost at what DWR recommended, which is self-sufficiency through the drilling of additional wells. And we pick areas that are especially known for the good quality of water, so we can hopefully have some higher quality water that requires less treatment. In looking through the staff report, I've just got to mention some concerns. No planning should assume normal rainfall. No planning should assume a hundred percent continuous pumping. And no planning should assume that all of our wells are going to hit and we're going to have idealized future well production. We need to be realistic about this as we look at these numbers, I think. We could do better to assert very specifically every time we put out numbers what the assumptions are about how we're going to get to those numbers. Looking at some of the numbers that we would have to hit to meet the build-out numbers that have been projected, gee, you know, I don't know how long it's going to take us and whether we even have the groundwater available to get us to some of those numbers. We're just now starting to develop additional water resources. We'll have a better idea before too long. But I think we have to build in a certain element of uncertainty there to reflect the reality of we're gathering the data and we don't know. We have to recognize that we're going to see dry years. We have to recognize that wells are going to taper off. We, on a regular basis, are going to have to rehabilitate some of our wells. We've already got two or three on the list that we're going to rehabilitate because their production has dropped off. They silt up, or ground shifts, or something happens, and you get less that a month, so you get to re-drill. And no matter what we have in the way of production, we have to reserve some. It's called a safety margin. We all know what that means. Things like what we had this summer, you know, several days of hot weather, a little bit outdoor watering, we went below our safety margin. We also, a couple of years ago, had some NPBE pollution. A leaky fuel tank, it appears, contaminated some of our groundwater, and we had to shut down two of our wells. And so in a system for reliable planning, we need to recognize that there has to be additional capacity beyond the needs of the system in order to maintain a safety margin. One, a couple of points on the Sewer Authority Midco side. I serve as the Director on that, and this will be very short.
I was just going to request exactly that.
Wet weather, for the TV audience, when we talk about wet weather events, we're talking about a deluge of rain. And for the people who don't know, when it rains, there is no such thing as a perfect sewer system. When it rains, a lot of water gets in, and our volumes double. And we have done, the tank up in Montero, it's a half-million-gallon tank. It costs us a lot of money to do it, but it's helping us avoid spills. But we still, and I think it's, I just, we really have to emphasize that when we're talking about the capacity of the sewer system, we cannot look strictly at the treatment capacity. We must look at the transmission capacity as the limiting factor. That's frankly, what it all comes down to is, if you put too much in, something comes out somewhere, and you don't want that. And the Redwood City example brings up another thing. There's a lot of pressure to look at recycled water. We are looking at recycled water. We're having a regular program every month with recycled water specialists coming in and with the potential for water reuse. That'll help solve a water problem on the one hand, but on the other hand, we know we're learning a lot more about the necessity to treat our sewage better so that the product that we put out is safer. Pharmaceuticals are not being treated out of the water right now. We're going to have to improve our treatment standard, and that's going to take up some of the capacity, some of our treatment capacity of the plants. We don't know any numbers yet on what impact that might have on the plant, but please be advised, we are looking towards providing a better, safer product, and that may have some effect on our treatment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Go ahead, one question.
Does recycling a well mean re-drilling, putting in a new casing?
That can be one of the ways to do it. I think there are a number of ways. I'm no expert on it, but I know re-drilling is one way. I've seen it done.
Yep. And another thing about how much benefit you can get using recycled water. I saw a figure, and I don't know whether this is true or not, which says that only one gallon of free of water ever gets into the sewer system.
I think we're looking, I think we're looking at a possibility of having a much higher number than that. CCWD has taken some look at this, maybe they can answer a couple of questions. We haven't actually gotten to the point yet where we have enough information to know what kind of treatment we might need to use to do a tertiary treatment. We know, standard American tertiary treatment, we know what that takes, but we're also, at the same time, I spoke at the Water Use Association on this earlier this year, the same time, we're learning we have to get the pharmaceuticals and the hormone disruptors out of the water before we put it back in contact with people. And so we're going to increase the standard. So the methodology for doing it, ultraviolet light, ozonation, activated charcoal filtration, super bacteria, they know how to eat all these things. There's a lot of different ways to do it, but you ask a great question, but we have a lot of water going into the plant. Being able to serve even any small portion of it would be a bonus. So it would be, it's just, it's going to come down to a dollar question.
It sounds like those improved treatments are going to increase the cost.
Of course they are, yes. Although there have been some surprising developments. I think there's some real hope in the future for what bacteria can do for us. So, but we've got a lot to learn. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Then April Vargas, and then Catherine Slater-Carter.
Good evening, Commissioner. My name is April Vargas. I'm a Montero resident, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of Committee for Great Food Health. Regarding Task Number Three, CGF supports the Midcoast Community Council recommendations, particularly the recommendation that asks that adjustments to the demand data reflect any ultimate policy changes adopted by the Board of Supervisors, and also the call for a complete hydrologic study to determine the available water resources and look at growth to that level that the available resources can support. The water capacity shortfall that you've been hearing about tonight and outlined in the staff report makes the lot merger policy, which you supported our last meeting, all the way more important in addition to restrictions on any new residential uses in zoning districts that has historically had done, because the more residential uses, the more the shortfall. Regarding Task Seven, while the committee is in agreement with the need to address increased traffic impacts caused by continuing residential development, we must support only those highway improvements that are consistent with the Coastal Act Sections 30250, Key among these on Policy 30252, the location and new development should maintain and enhance public access to the coast by facilitating provision of extension of transit service, providing commercial facilities within adjoining residential developments or in other areas that will minimize the use of coastal access roads, provide non-automobile circulation within development, and provide adequate parking facilities for provide substitute means of serving the development of public transportation, among others. Policy 30254 regarding Public Works, new or expanded public works facilities shall be designed and limited to accommodate needs generated by development or uses permitted consistent with the provisions of this division, provided that is the intent of the legislature, which to my knowledge is still, that State Highway Route One in rural areas of the coastal zone remain a scenic two-lane road. That was referenced by Mr. Benjamin earlier. In reference to the transportation authority improvements that have been mentioned in the staff report for lane widening from Miramontes to Capistrano, I have a copy of the Agenda Report from CCAC from October ninth, and that project now has been relegated to lower priority project from the mid-range priority that George had originally reported on, which at the time he wrote his report had been true. Finally, I wanted to make some comments on the comments from Public Works Director Cullen. While we certainly understand and support the need to have County Council review any proposals for additional traffic mitigation and have them reviewed for performance with government codes, we would urge the Planning Commission to recommend more investigation of these mitigation measures. And rather than accepting the initial assumptions of Director Cullen that the majority of these proposals are not feasible, we suggest instead that a more constructive approach would be entered into where there could be meetings with representatives of the pertinent transportation agencies to assess the possibilities of successfully implementing these recommendations without undue cost or responsibility borne solely by the county. So while we, as always, appreciate staff's input on some of the issues, we really would urge the Planning Commission to move some of these things forward. The fact that it hasn't been done yet in the county is certainly not a reason to expect they can't be done in the future. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Catherine Slater-Carter and Riplow.
Thank you. Good evening. Catherine Slater-Carter from Montero. I want to thank every member of the commission who's here. It's been a long day for you guys, and all of the staff as well. Thank you for making these evening meetings possible. I'm going to start out with some rather random comments. I want to start out with Task Seven about traffic. Within communities, particularly in Montero, we suddenly have a lot of on-street parking as more and more people are filling up the houses, and the off-street parking doesn't fit. There are several streets in Montero now that a fire engine could not drive down because there are streets, the streets have parking, on-street parking on both sides, and it's about fourteen feet wide, whereas a minimum fire safety lane calls for a much wider lane. I think it's about twenty feet for a subdivision. So we're seeing some real safety issues coming up, and I'd like to see the traffic mitigations try to deal with perhaps finding ways to increase parking, maybe widen some of our streets without putting a burden necessarily on the individual homeowners. As far as the expansion of shuttle service, interestingly enough in my research, this was one of the original conditions on the original SAM plan to reduce air pollution. Needless to say, it didn't work then, and I think in the present and mandate may not work still. As far as Highway One, we need a traffic plan. We've been asking for a traffic plan at Midcoast Council level for years, and years, and years. It still isn't here. I think this is a beginning, but I'd really like to see some serious study about what improvements can be made short of just widening. Now for Task Three, I want to point out to you both, a new player enters the pipeline debate. The Coastal Commission has recognized Montero Sanitary, now Montero Water and Sanitary District as a stakeholder in the CCWD pipeline. I mentioned this to the Planning Commission when the firm was initially before you, and I'm pleased to let you know that I will be meeting along with CCWD with the Coastal Commission next Wednesday. This is an important consideration. We should be looking not only at capacities, but at regional solutions. I'm very concerned about wells. One of the reasons that I pushed to buy the water district and turn it into a public district was because of the number of wells we've got. I heard today about a woman who just bought a house on Fifth Street in Montero that has non-potable water. So here's this woman who's bought a house, spent hundreds of thousands of dollars, and doesn't, can't take the water. There's a house in Moss Beach. It doesn't get enough water from its well to run a household on a daily basis, to shower up the wine and bring in water and do what they can. In talking to a contractor last weekend, there are apparently eight houses in our area that have these problems. The more wells that go in without looking at the state yields and the water quality issues, which I'll get to in a minute when I'm talking about drainage, the more families that we're putting at risk. We need to be looking at state yields for wells. This LCP update is not only for the long term, it's also for the short term, and families and lives are at stake here, and I'm very, very concerned. There are several issues on the concern world, the Resource Management District and the Planted Urban Cultural District. In the report, it is assumed that these will not be part of the urban infrastructure, and yet there is self-pressure, as has been for some years, to increase development levels in those areas. I think as part of this process, the Planning Commission should make it very clear that it is the intent of the Planning Commission that the resource management and the PAD land should remain at very, very low density. It will protect our water quality, it will protect our roads, it will protect our traffic and our urban infrastructure. I did account one type of the RF land, of the lots in the RF area in Montero, and there were over thirteen-hundred lots. If we built those out, it would add a huge amount. It would almost increase Montero's development potential by fifty percent. We would no longer have urban services for management. So I think that really needs to be cleared out, and you can certainly do that as part of this process. One thing that wasn't touched on in this report is drainage. We don't have combined sewer and stormwater drainage facilities, so all of our drainage comes down, used to go into grassy ditches, and now it leads to paved into asphalted ditches. I was looking at the NPDES permit for the county. It's just been renegotiated, and so there's a new order, but it only requires stormwater and drainage solution. It's just been renegotiated, and so there's a new order, but it only requires stormwater and drainage solutions or mitigations for projects of ten thousand square feet of impervious surfaces or more, and that's some of our problems now. I hate to say that, I will. Our drainage problems continue to worsen. We've got continually flooding streets, houses, and we're looking at water quality issues. The more impervious surfaces there are, the more water pollution there is, not only for our creeks in our ocean, but also for our groundwater. And these are houses that depend on groundwater. We need to start looking at those solutions now. I'll just leave you with that. If you have any more questions, this, by the way, is the report. I got it from the county today. It's a wonderful report. It talks about what kinds of pollution come from the creation of impervious surfaces. We do not have any drainage plans for houses or for projects less than ten thousand square feet of impervious surfaces. Yet there's only going to be one or two projects on the entire Midcoast that have that kind of impervious surfaces. Meanwhile, we've got houses going in, either ten to the acre, which will be covering those problems, creating the drainage and the pollution. We need a plan to deal with that now, and frankly, that's the county's responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine Slater Carter. Rick Womack, followed by Fred Torre.
Good evening, Rick Womack from Miramar, speaking as myself, although I'm on the Midcoast Community Council. Want to mull back out again to our more foggy days now in Montero. I think Jimmy Benjamin was looking over my shoulder when I had my notes, and I think he stole most of my notes. I'll be able to zip through a lot of this stuff, and I'll take care of him afterwards. But one, so a general question just later is, I just heard in discussions with the Coastal Commission that they're talking about LCPs and improvements and infrastructure. They're looking out twenty years into the future, and we're always talking in this about build-out, which is fifty or sixty years roughly into the future. I've never really understood in the whole process how that's going to work. We're going to keep moving forward with build-out questions. What's the Coastal Commission going to do when we present them with those documents? That's just kind of generic questions. I don't know. Have, have we brought them into this picture of a war up front to say, what are you going to do when we give you this answer, and you're going to throw it right back at us? Or if we could maybe ask them some questions right now, that might give us some vision of how to get this approved when it gets up to them. Question on the SAM plan. I've seen it mentioned as far as sewer capacity, and we've talked about the wet weather transmission issues. We've talked about the need for recycled water. It's my understanding that all that recycling and treatment is going to go into the SAM plan, and I've never seen in here it talk about that part of the capacity. I've heard some people just say, oh, that's going to take like one-third of the capacity in SAM plan, which might fill up all the available capacity. So I don't, if we're talking recycled water, which I think we're all going to be talking here, I don't see those numbers getting into sewer capacity part. I seem to ignore it and say, oh, we have tons of capacity. But if we're going to be using it for recycle, we should put that in somewhere or at least some number. Running quickly through a couple of those water figures Jimmy mentioned, I think there was a problem with the peak days there. He mentioned it's twenty, I think, total over eight years, not every, every year. I had some concerns about that nineteen eighty table being extrapolated twenty years into the future that he mentioned also. I'm sure we have real numbers. I don't know why we're not using the real numbers on page three and that table, they pulled a table from the LCP, I guess, and extrapolated to the future. We must, these are pretty easy things to get. I would just, let's use real numbers. Probably the biggest concern I had was on page eleven, that last part of that section where they say, in the future, the district intends to upgrade the pumps to meet build-out peak day demand. I've heard this in various conversations that have been going on for the last years here of the intent of CCWD to size infrastructure to meet peak demand periods, and I've never heard of that done anywhere but here. I've always seen things sized, infrastructure to average flows and things like that, and sizing pipes and pumps to the maximum possible big. I'm also a little concerned when it says the district intends to do this, how that decision was kind of made. I don't remember that seeing that in like a meeting as a part of the capital plan. As Jimmy said, there is a restriction on that very specifically now, that it was sized to a certain size, so you couldn't increase it, and they're just sort of assuming they're going to increase it here somehow in the future, and I don't know how those decisions are being made. A suggestion I had is so builds on what Catherine you said. A lot of these numbers are the same numbers apparently that went to the Coastal Commission that they've already rejected in their letters twice. They said the data provided doesn't justify the pipes or whatever they're doing, so there's a concern already of the Coastal Commission with this data. My suggestion would be to take our, I think you folks at the county and everybody else are going to be in this big meeting that's being scheduled, I'm hoping the sewer district will be included, and I think finding that the Coastal Commission have them, the CCWD and everybody together in the same room, lock them in the room and force them to come out with agreeable numbers. And I think that will push this one way or the other, but I think they'll have numbers that everybody has to agree on finding, we can just resolve that problem of, I don't believe your numbers, I don't like your numbers. Just force them to go do that at that big meeting. So these numbers may go up or down, but I think they should be able to agree at that meeting. Quickly on the traffic, it was my understanding when the CCAG report came out, forecasting out to two thousand and ten, that they are, because we were there when they presented that, that that already included, all forecast improvements were already included in that report, and it was still going to be bad. So I think was, I don't think you can say like the transportation authority, oh, new projects are going to save today. That needs to be checked, because they didn't very clear when we got that report that it included all the projected, you know, widening fixes, straightens were already in there and it was still bad. And real quickly, I just heard that at the Catholic Basin Council meeting last night, a paper was presented saying that all the current traffic programs are underfunded, and there's problems with all the current programs, and that Measure A, if it gets through, it gets at two-thirds, which is a bit, but if that gets through, a lot of that money is going to have to be used to pay off the current projects. And we can't just say magic is going to occur because we need to know how much indemnity already are started. So we can't just say TA will say it's going to think there are, that just came out yesterday, so I haven't got a copy of that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Fred Pollard.
Ladies and gentlemen, and ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for being here tonight. I'm Fred Pollard, Secretary of Renata Sanitary District, and I want to say I agree with most of the things that Leonard warned us that previously. I think there's going to be a recurring theme throughout these tasks that we have to bring down the build-out numbers. We, they're, they just, the current build-out numbers that we're hearing now are, bring too much pressure on all of the infrastructure, water, pools, roads, sewers. We're, we're feeling, we're at capacity already. I was one of the original members that helped create the community plan with the county, and it was adopted in seventy-eight by the Board of Supervisors then. Of course, I was just a kid then, you understand. And I believe that, and that became the LCP, and I believe we're already over the number projected at that end. The number in the plan was forty-five percent, but it's really, I think, numbers, more than population. And that's more than the number of communities. We, we can't afford that kind of population. You know, residences cost more in services than they create benefits for, for county, for government. So it's not a plus to have so many more residences being developed. Since the fifties, we had, I believe it was around fifties, you had to merge lots in order to build a house, and now suddenly county is approving lots, houses on twenty-five-foot lots. That's ridiculous. That's like a driveway you build another house on. It's way, way too much pressure, and I'm really getting frustrated on the Renata District that we, we want to allow building on standard lots before the substandard, but there's, I wish we could come to an agreement with the county that we can't tolerate building on all these substandard lots, because as I've said before, it's just too much pressure. So I guess that's it. I would just like to say, I hope you can help bring down the numbers that are being projected, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Susan. Very kind. Andy Coverdale.
You're exactly right. It's Coverdale. We'll cover it. Cover time, yes.
Good evening. My name is Ken Coverdale, and I just wanted to take this opportunity, members of the commission and long-range planners and senior planners in the county, county staff, Commissioner of the Fire District, I just want to compliment you for the amount of time and effort and energy and patience that you're putting into this activity. I live in Miramar, California, which is just down the block in the unincorporated area. I've lived there for fifteen years. I've been on the coast for twenty-five years. I currently serve on the Coastside County Water District Board of Directors, and I've served over ten years. And I can tell you as a member of the board that we are so excited to finally have a plan that the community agrees to so that we can build the appropriate infrastructure to serve this community. We're very tired of the accusations. We're very tired of the controversy. We're very tired of the criticism that we're somehow working to the wrong ends for the community, and we're so excited to have a local coastal plan that will reflect the current needs of the community. We're currently working to the old LCP because it's law, and as elected officials or appointed officials, we take an oath to serve the law, and so we are so anxious for you to alter the law to meet our community's needs and allow us to work to that law. So I, I want to compliment you and commend you on that. As a personal citizen, I'd like to address the traffic issue, and the traffic issue that I would like to address with you is this. I live in Miramar area, and at Miramar Drive, we have two five-foot diameter culverts which go under Highway One. And basically, my kids, who are now teenagers, have grown up walking under Highway One to get to the beach, and it's really the only reason we felt confident and comfortable allowing them to go to the beach themselves for all these years as they've grown up. And I would urge you to consider that because it's a very useful way to allow people to live in our community and not feel obstructed by traffic signals and still get to the places that we all want to get who live on the east side of the highway. So I know it's sort of an unusual suggestion, but when you talk about traffic efforts or ways in which we can live here and feel like we're in a small community, where we have people who continue to want to race down the Highway Fifty-Five so they can get to their commuter positions over the hill, this might be one viable solution, and I think it's very much an inexpensive one. You know, we're going to tunnel through the mountain, well, let's tunnel under the highway a few times and allow some surfers to get down to the beach. With regard to stoplights, I personally feel stoplights are a great effort because if I want to go to the beach, I want those people to stop. I currently go and try to cross the highway on my bicycle, and I find it to be a real Russian roulette. So I think we've changed from living in a community where we have a highway. I think we live in a community where we have a suburban road. It's not a very popular concept, but if you, any of you would like to visit me in Miramar on a Sunday, we'll cross the highway to go to the beach to get to the bike trail, and we can talk about the reality of the situation. So I'd urge you to think about that. I think the idea of an overall traffic plan is an excellent idea, and I hope you have the wisdom to come up with one. I don't have a solution, and so I am so thankful that there are so many talented people here to work on that and so much input from the community. With regard to drainage, I have one thing I'd really like you to consider. We live in hillside communities, and one of the things that currently occurs in stormwater management in the county of San Mateo is we are taking rainwater leaders, and we are taking subterranean water off of hillsides from foundations, and we are driving them into dispersion holes on hillsides. And I have to tell you that if you look at the structural integrity of our hillsides, you know that we're in a mudslide zone. It's very, very dangerous to be taking water from a thirty-six-foot-high road, sending it straight down a rainwater leader and plugging it into a four-foot hole filled with rock. But that's the current county standard, and you're going to see a lot of lawsuits, I believe. I think his replica is going to see a lot of conditions that are extremely problematic because the county is approving those systems, and they're causing drainage realities for people downhill that could cause structural integrity and structural problems with these foundations and with these other private drainage systems. So when Catherine Slater Carter talks about drainage plans, it starts at the new residence, and it goes all the way to the ocean. It's a very critical issue. So thank you for your time. I'm sorry I haven't had an opportunity to meet or speak with you before, and I just have to tell you that the Coastside County Water District will build the appropriate infrastructure to serve your long-range plan. Please give it to us soon so we can get off of this divisiveness and get on with replacing fifty-five-year-old pipelines. Thank you very much.
Thank you very kindly. Gentlemen, that's all of the speaker slips I have. We're unoutstanding, and therefore, are there any questions, any problems at this moment? A lot of questions. Okay, shall we follow?
Well, the issues that we want to leave in the public area open.
I would, I would think we should, deeply about leaving the public area open. If there's any questions we want to ask at this time. This one microphone roulette is very difficult. I just want to watch. Yes, please. Well, there's a man of action. I don't know. He gave me a good one.
There's so many issues that have been raised. I guess one of the questions I have is, how has the report that we have in front of us dealt with the transmission issues in quantitative terms? Is it possible to do so in our lifetime?
I would answer that. The, you used the correct term. The report at present deals with the wet weather transmission limitations qualitatively as the speaker's correctly indicated. I anticipated your question, and I have a proposed revision to the recommendation, if you wish to include it, which would be direct staff to describe more quantitatively the current wet weather sewage transmission limitations and efforts to overcome them. So at, in the report today, that you're reviewing today, I identify qualitatively that there are wet water limitation, wet weather transmission limitations, that the Sewer Authority Midcoast Side has sufficient capacity to treat the level of sewage that will be generated at build-out. However, we have been informed by the district to date qualitatively, or at the time of the staff report was prepared, it was articulated qualitatively, and I could work with their staff to describe the quantitative dimensions of that limitation.
We heard a number of people concerned about the table which you used for water demand and whether there were more recent numbers that might be useful.
This was non-residential water demand. I was working with a study group, many speakers tonight were part of that study group for several months to come to. several months to come to an agreement on the numbers. And it was suggested to rely on the earlier LCP numbers. I went, this was after I attempted to get more current, well, more representative current numbers and I found it difficult to do because the research I did with published reports did not indicate, it would give aggregate numbers for how much industry, certain industries, how much water was used. Like in the annual report for CCWD, it would show how many gallons, but it didn't say how many acres per gallon. So I couldn't develop a standard from that. There wasn't any speci, I could not, in the research I did, I did not find a specific number of gallons per acre for per land use. And I did, using the internet and other sources, I tried to identify that information. The conclusion was, I couldn't find anything better. So working with the group, we decided to use the numbers, the, the generation rates or demand rates for these non-industrial, excuse me, non-residential uses. And I'd be happy, if anyone could identify sources that have, you know, this is how much retail uses per acre, how much, this is how much industrial uses per acre, I'd be happy to use them and, I mean, review them and possibly incorporate, but I could not find that data.
Something big has changed and that is that the Sault Ste. Water District now is operated by a public agency. And we're happy to make available to you staff which before, corporate owners weren't willing to share. So we may be able to get you more information. One, one big thing has changed recently and that is that the water system in Sault Ste. Water Beach area is now publicly owned. And the previous corporate owner was in the middle of litigation and I'm particularly interested in sharing a lot of details about their, their water supply. I believe that the public agency that now manages that, speaking as one fourth member out of five, I have a suspicion that we're going to be able to help you get better information, more specific quantitative information. We have, we have a new engineering firm that's on top of that. We now have an operations crew that is now in liberty to speak. So I'd encourage you to work with the district and get more quantitative information.
I appreciate that offer. I just want to make sure we're all talking about the same thing. The reference was made to the table. It was on page four of the staff report. And the, if we look at the top, the assumption in the original LCP was two thousand gallons per acre per day for neighborhood commercial. Are you suggesting that you would be able to get any neighborhood commercial demand figures that would be like that number of gallons per acre?
To the extent we have it.
That's a point I can ask you to add in a reading.
I'm ready.
Thank you.
Could I, could I add, respond to that? I may be able to shed another light. Sorry. So if the, if this, the issue is, if you have the gallons per year information and looking for is an allocation of how much area was associated with the study during that time, we certainly have that information about land use within Hefner Bay. We know a lot about the amount of area. I don't know if you have that information at the county. We certainly have a good GIS system, but I don't know.
Well, what we're talking about is asking Coastside County Water District to go through all of its data, and I've been through this exercise with them, all of it, all of Coastside County Water District's data is in the form of the payments per parcel per water service. And they would then have to, we would have to identify all of the parcels that were neighborhood commercial and then, and then determine how much of the use from that parcel was commercial versus commercial and residential and try to make an assumption of what commercial use is from ratepayer data by parcel. And we'd have to identify the parcels.
But if you're, if you're, what you're looking for is an average rate, rather than trying to do this on an individual lot by lot, parcel by parcel basis, wouldn't it be more efficient to start with some total gallon usage by, by usage that's already published in their table so CCWD doesn't have to do it anymore? And look at your data and say, how much physical area is associated with that particular type of land use and divide the overall gallons consumed by the overall acreage of that land use? Isn't that an easier way to get to the same average?
At this point, there may be, there may be bugs and shortcomings involved in that. It sounds simple now that there may be mixed uses on property.
Yeah, through the chair, I think it would be appropriate if, if, this is not a dialogue between staff and members of the public. This is obviously an information gathering effort on behalf of the commission. If people want to submit information, it should go to the commission rather than arguing with, or against, and staff arguing with members of the public about the comments.
Thank, thank you, Counselor. I was not thinking other than arguing that this, to get a moment of time, it's my problem. I will take responsibility for it. Therefore, yes, please.
I would make a gentle comment. I was so impressed with the input we received and I, and I've grown to expect that from the members who met Coast Community Council and other people just before testified before Commission tonight that there were a number of new people, you know, from Water District and so on, and, and they're at that same high level. And I think coastal areas, this is important to have so many knowledgeable, dedicated people who are interested in helping solve problems. And as I see it, our principal problem is to somehow try and reduce the buildup numbers to a level that infrastructure can support. And the planning commission has limited power. We can recommend that we can't actually make the decisions, but I think we certainly should do everything we can and use our influence with the board to try and see that that is brought out.
I'm going to applaud Commissioner Noble's remarks because I agree 100 percent. To my mind, incredible, erudite remarks I've heard are giving too much food for thought at the moment. And therefore, I think I've been asked that we close the public hearing at this particular moment in time. I think we can do that and go to staff. Is that agreeable, gentlemen? It's up to you. I'm not going to ramrod this through.
Certainly for tonight.
Certainly for tonight, okay. Let us close the, the. All in favor? I want to thank you once again for the input.
Oh, I guess what we have, I'm supposed to say it again because I wasn't talking to the mic. I think we have a couple of choices in front of us. One is to either accept that what we have in the report is close enough to the truth to say we're willing to make these recommendations or supervisors as we want, or to say that there have been some interesting questions raised, that we would want some more data related to capacity and that we would want to ask staff to do some work and come back and look at this at another, other times. In which case, I think we probably would want to tell them where we would like to see more information.
There was a question, I mean, a spot of it regarding the private wells and the public water. As I recall, I guess to this George, do you know when, when that study, it's kind of final regarding about the state of the, of the wells, the water?
Terry Burns is the project planner for that and unfortunately he's not here today. We're in phase two of that project and I think the estimate completion date is a year, year and a half. So, yeah, within the general timeframe.
In actuality, before we get the requisite information in terms of the hydrological report, we have to wait about a year and a half to two years for all of that appropriate information. And that's going to really affect build-out in my mind. I could be wrong.
Okay, I think I should provide a sense of context here. What this, like last time, the data that's included in task three is a representation of what's allowed under the current LCP. It was, we, at the last meeting, we discussed build-out and that was the articulation or enunciation of how many units would be on the ground or other forms of development would be on the ground when all the policies in the current LCP, when construction is occurred according to all the policies that are in the current LCP. So we, so that was a more precise and representative description of what the LCP would allow. What today's exercise is, is an attempt to determine what the demand on infrastructure will be by that level of development and the best effort we can take to determine if that infrastructure will be there. I have not intended task three, and, well, put it this way, when task three was first identified and suggested through study sessions and scoping sessions three or four years ago, it was intended to be a more updated calculation. It was not to change policy. It was not to lower build-out or increase build-out. It was not to change infrastructure, but to have a baseline information, much like I said two years ago, I mean, excuse me, the last meeting about build-out. This was baseline information, updated, more accurate baseline information that could be used at subsequent meetings under subsequent projects to reevaluate build-out. So with that said, what this exercise really was, was you determine the amount of development that will be on the ground at time of build-out. You determine, using standards, what the demand will be of that aggregate development at build-out. And using the best information available, you determine how much capacity will be available at build-out. And that's baseline information to help in future land use decisions. Those future land use decisions are, were never intended to be activated tonight. It was to make sure that we had as accurate a baseline description of the relationship between build-out and infrastructure capacity. Now, with relation to the parcels that are being served by wells, that did not factor into this analysis as is indicated in the opening comment of the staff report under key issues. Because at build-out, it is assumed that as per the purposes of this study, that all development that's on wells now will be hooked up to a public utility system. And the county, in the approval of wells over the years, has always had a condition on those wells that says when a public utility, what service is available at a public utility, you must cease operation of a well and move over to the public utility. Since build-out, at the next meeting, we will, we will be discussing how long will it be till we get to build-out? Will it be twenty-five years? Will it be fifty years? It all depends on the number of, of units that are allowed each year. That will be the topic of the next meeting. However, the assumption for this study, for this baseline data collection and evaluation process, was that all allowed development by build-out in the urban area, in the study area, will be hooked up to some utility. So I did not factor in wells and the amount of water that wells are being used because the assumption for this study is all the properties will be hooked up to water supply, a, one of the two water, water supply agencies. I hope that helps a little bit in your deliberations.
Now, one of the things I really find is perfect is the figures about the projected water supply compared to projected demand in build-out, seventy-three percent. And that's based on maybe unrealistic supply figures like continuous pumping of wells, which you can't do.
Well, I would not say that it was based on continuous pumping assumptions. What I did is I went to the documents that were released by each individual agency and it stated its capacity, its required to file a report indicating its available capacity. And I used those capacity numbers in this evaluation. Those numbers did not say it was continuous pumping or not continuous pumping. It just said, what they said was, this district or this agency has this much capacity. These were reports that they submitted to the state. So I imagine that they used methodology that did not include continuous pumping in stating to the state what the usable capacity is. I used Coastside County's, the Coastside County Water District's annual report. I used reports by the State Water Resources Board and a few other, on the Public Utilities Commission. And all of those had citations about the capacity. It didn't say continuous pumping, not continuous pumping. It just said here, this was the declaration of capacity.
Well, you don't know how they reached their figures of what their capacity was. Was it, the projection is made by assuming that if they knew their pumping rate, if they did that continuously, that's what it would be?
You're correct that I don't know. I was assuming that it was a usable number because this was the number that was used in their reports to the state and in their annual reports. And I was assuming that it wouldn't be a fraudulent number that took in, that, you know, that had a hidden factor in it. Okay, what I meant was, a number that couldn't be relied upon as their capacity. That's, that's better way to say it.
So, and, as looking at your recommendation and also looking at recommendation from Ms. Coles, Community Council. It's, your, your point one-two and their one-two is pretty, pretty much the same.
They're accepted. Yeah, sorry, carry on.
Except that they are asking one more, which is on page thirteen.
That is correct.
I have no problem adding that recommendation as part of yours, except maybe changing a few words. I, I would, I would say complete the hydrolog study to determine available water resource and plan the flow to that level of rate of resource can support.
Plan instead of, yeah. Sounds like it has the same effect as through this column.
Thank you. I, I would willing to do that if everybody else is listening.
I expected we'd be making our specific recommendations tonight. I thought we'd have time to consider what we, what we heard and probably input we've received. Then that we get another modified input from George maybe reflecting some of the information that we have presented tonight.
Your commission has two options, much like Commissioner Bomber stated his opening remarks. You could formulate a motion towards an action tonight on at least one or more or both of these tasks. Or as I indicated in my opening meeting, we have reserved a meeting at the end of this process to come back to. It has two purposes to that meeting. One, all of the actions that you're taking in the meetings leading up to the end of the process will be tentative approvals or in-concept approvals. And you could then at the last meeting go over those again before a final approval and recommendation of the board. The second reason for the meeting at the end is to, any loose ends, any follow-up, any direction that you would, if you do not feel you have the information to take action on task three, you can direct staff to do additional things and then come back and you can take action at the end of the process too. action at the end of the process, too.
If I may, I think one of the things that's confusing about what we had before, certainly in light of what George has laid down as the ground rules, one way we could look at this is, is the data that's here sufficient, not necessarily 100 percent accurate, but is it sufficient to engage in a discussion at some time in the future, where we have all of the other pieces together, about what changes we might recommend be made in the LCP? So we could look at this as just a data document, and ask the question, is it adequate? And does it matter whether the best-case future capacity, average annual demand shortfall is 38 percent or 50 percent? They're both the kinds of things that would require, you know, significant policy discussion.
Just to, sometime. No, just to underscore your point, yes, I think that it would be a prudent way to look at this data as, is this the level of information, or is the accuracy at a level to help the commission make future policy decisions or future policy recommendations? Or is it out of sync enough that you need, it needs to be revised before you can make those future policy recommendations? So I would concur with the way Commissioner Bomber has kind of stated what is before you to adopt.
And I'm going to agree with Commissioner Bomber at the same event. In other words, I look at Task Three, we're zeroing in strictly on Task Three. And if I look at Task Three, I'm perfectly satisfied with the Midcoast Community Council's recommendations. To me, they seem excellent. But we have the out, as it were, because we're saying, look, this is the best we have, and we can always adjust the data in the future. So we have an out, we're doing the best we can with the information we have available in reference to the task Three, task Three, excuse me. Now, are we somewhat of an agreement here?
Maybe I could offer a suggestion. If we look at the second component, maybe we could elaborate and add a different, number B, if we look at direct staff to adjust the data as necessary to reflect ultimate policy changes adopted by the Board of Supervisors, and we could add, and more accurate data sources that become available, which could embody some of the concerns people have brought up tonight, that more accurate data sources for the assumptions are out there, they just have to be sought. So maybe, possibly, the second part, one B, could be revised to, after the words Board of Supervisors, to reflect ultimate policy changes adopted by the board, and to reflect more precise, more precise information that would affect data conclusions, or something like that. I'll come up with some wording, but something to that point, to that effect.
Well, if we can get the wording on that, we can come up with a motion.
Well, I also would like to state, I think Commissioner Wong and Chairman Kennedy have talked about the Midcoast Council recommendation, and the third bullet in there, which would be a C, and if, I think Commissioner Wong had said, change the wording instead of limit growth, but plan growth to the level available resources can support, if that becomes a motion, County Council has additional thought on what maybe we want to be added for wording.
I think we'd better hear from County Council.
One of the pieces that you don't have in this report, because when I reviewed it and I had a discussion with George, you know, he assured me that this is just strictly a data report, and it's not a policy recommendation necessarily on some of the ultimate decisions that would need to be made as a result of this data. One of the pieces is to what degree the law would allow a restriction or a reduction of growth based on the available resources. And obviously, that is a very important consideration that the commission may want to take into account, and certainly the Board of Supervisors will need to consider, as to how much risk of potential litigation based on regulatory restriction on growth could create. And so, that's not in your report, and that's certainly an analysis that you would want before you, before you start adjusting, or making a decision as to whether or not existing growth should be reduced or limited.
It certainly, perhaps we should add that information, but it certainly seems to me that the power is own, based on serving the public health, safety, and welfare, and if resources necessary for proper and sensible development aren't available, then certainly would seem to be ample justification under the basic zoning power to exercise that power. I mean, if there isn't, when developments are approved, we're supposed to make findings that there are adequate roadways to serve the development, or adequate water, and other things. And if there's an imbalance there, it was, I mean, certainly we should have that analysis done, but it would seem to me that it, I can't imagine it would be problematical. If indeed, and I'm not prejudging the data, but to field it, based on some property rights argument, we would be forced to accept destructive or unreasonable growth that would subject the public to water shortages year after year, or gridlock traffic, or the alternative of destruction of precious scenic resources to put in traffic infrastructure that's either way too expensive or inconsistent with other parts of the coastal plan, I just can't imagine that we would be compelled to do that. And again, I'm not prejudging what the data would ultimately show, and I'm not saying that we shouldn't have that detailed legal analysis, but again, the power is own is grounded in the public health, safety, and welfare, and certainly a balance of basic infrastructure and services to public needs, and the ability of the environment to accept that. If we can't zone through that, why are we here?
Maybe I can assist in both B and the future C. I've come up with language that reflects what I was stammering over earlier, would be, maybe after the word Board of Supervisors, we add, in any more precise and representative demand and capacity standards, or other data that become available.
And what's your recommendation for C?
I've been coming to that. County Council has advised, there may be legal concerns, and Commissioner Silver had responded that. We frequently, when we pose recommendations, and there is a legal implication somewhere down the line, there could be, we always find it more prudent to make it explicit than implicit, and to use an example, or we approved them when your commission approved. The merger recommendation last week, you prefaced it by, to the extent allowed by law, and I would recommend a similar approach here, that if your commission was to include the bullet, the new C, that's recommended by the Midcoast Community Council, as modified by Commissioner Wong, I'd recommend the wording, complete hydrologic studies to determine available water resources, and, to the extent allowed by law, plan growth to that level the available resources can support.
Great, that sounds excellent.
I'm wondering if, I'm sure that sounded reasonable, but I wonder if we should pass a resolution, we can maybe choose, and everything we do will be, to the extent allowed by law, because we never do things that are allowed by law. After all, we've got to do everything that's allowed by law, just make that a general disclaimer.
Well, I'm not sure. Let's Fisher, I think it is.
Yeah, let's.
Can we get a consensus? I like the Fisher cut rate on just this item, because I think item seven is, because some conservation. We could pass this as a recommendation sent on to the board.
I guess I could go either way, if I may. If we consider this to be a collection of data that would be used for policy decisions at some time in the future, and if we struggle to make that future sometime while we're all still here, then C is essentially unnecessary, because it says, oh, we're going to use the data and do some policy work. But, you know, if you want to put it in, that's fine. I'm just trying to keep things clean.
Just as a point of clarification, I think C relates to the data that emerges from the hydrologic study, not the data that is before us tonight. That's the only clarification.
I just wanted, I just wanted to get the hydrological study in there, that's all. I just wanted to make sure that that was in, the data that's being collected.
So what language do you have for C?
Oh, I'll restate it. Complete hydrological studies to determine available water resources, and to the extent allowed by law, plan growth to that level, the available resources can support.
That's fine, I'll move recommendations for Task Three as stated.
It's all in favor? All in favor? All in. Pulling agreement, we have. Now, on to Task Seven.
It's interesting that, you know, when we talk about Task Three being data, Task Seven is all policy.
Possibly, before your commission starts to discuss this task, I should, I took notes during the presentation, and I reviewed the recommendation by the Coastal Commission. I think where the major deviation between the staff recommendation and the Midcoast Community Council, I said Coastal Commission, I mean Midcoast, sorry, it's late.
Elevated.
The Midcoast Community Council, I think it relates to B most. Now, the Midcoast Community Council calls for, to increase. Staff says consider increasing, there's a slight difference there, but this will be worked out in your discussion. The next thing is, the staff is recommending that the fees, use of the road mitigation fees that have historically been for county roads, be used for state Highway One improvements, and that they be increased. The Coastal, sorry, the Midcoast Community Council concurs with that, but they also concur, excuse me, also recommend that the fees be used for a multi-modal trail, safe crossings, as an alternative, and safe crossings, alternative for cars on Highway One, and that they be used as matching funds for the local transportation alternatives program. So I guess what I'm trying to say is, the Midcoast Community Council, it recommends that you do increase, that you recommend that the fees be increased, and that they be used in three ways. For state Highway One improvements located in the Midcoast, for multi-modal trail and safe crossings projects, and for matching funds for local transportation alternatives program.
I guess, for me, let me say the unspeakable. We have no data in front of us now to support the concept that intermodal trail is a reasonable expenditure of public funds. And it may very well be, but I wouldn't feel comfortable in making that recommendation without some kind of indication that it's actually going to have an impact. Possibly, I could help your commission, we will be visiting this topic as the topic of a specific task, according to my, this year. Oh, here it is. When we hold meetings to talk about, hold a meeting to talk about Task Seventeen, Task Seventeen is evaluate opportunities to establish a parallel trail within the Highway One right-of-way and great separated pedestrian crossings at locations along Highway One. At that time, we will have a focus, an evening focused on discussing the issue of a multi-modal trail. We'll be talking about a proposal that when Caltrans does improvements, that they, that the improvements include a multi-modal trail, even if they're doing other work on the highway. At that time, your commission may want to talk in great detail about other approaches toward, to achieve the multi-modal trail, instead of tackling that tonight. It's a possibility.
George, can we add the, I guess, the safe crossing as part of that, too, at that time?
The safe what?
Safe crossing.
That is part of it, that's the, that's part of it. The Task Seventeen is great separated pedestrian crossings at locations along Highway One.
I see.
That's going, that's scheduled for January 14.
So I guess my, you know, I have some consideration that we might want to increase the fees, but I'm not happy with completing that B item until we've addressed B.
I'm extremely worried about, what do you call, unanticipated consequences, that's not the right wording I'm looking for, of raising litigation fees. At what point do we reach that, reach a situation where people go, say, hey, forget it, it's too expensive for you to go into business here, et cetera, et cetera? I don't know the philosophy behind this. I'm worried about the philosophy behind this. In other words, if you could, if I could get information, data coming to me, say from, just for the fun of it, because I'm not sure where I would speak here, but give me a Stanford MBA, perhaps, give me a St. Mary's MBA, and maybe a City College MBA, just joking, of course, and let's get into the dollar and cents situation of what are the consequences of doing this, if we raise the fee a half percent here, a half percent there? I know it's silly, but the small amount that the city of San Francisco collects makes some people come down to my beautiful city of Daly City, rather than pay the extra, I think a quarter of a percent. But how does this affect business, and how does this affect, you see, the mitigation fees scare me, because I don't know enough about it, and I'm worried about just going ahead and saying, yeah, let's raise them, I would like some data.
Well, I think getting the data is certainly a good idea, but, I mean, there's a real problem that you have to solve, you can't just, if you're just tackle it, it's possible. You've got to have some proposed solution.
Maybe I could provide a little more sense of context again. The money that's collected for the county mitigation fee right now has historically been used for local roads. The Director of Public Works has informed me that there is no surplus money, everything that they collect is used for local roads, and sometimes there's not enough collected. So if, what your, what your commission may be wanting to consider is, do we want to expand out into assisting the improvement of state roads, and to do that, that would mean collect more money at the time of development by each person who's developing, so that those fees, in addition to improving local roads, can be used for state roads? That's the genesis of this, of this proposal.
That's true. And my, and my further quandary is, what is the state's reply to this? I'm going to say, well, if you can raise X number of funds to improve state highways, rather than, say, Highway One going through our towns and communities, I'm afraid they're going to say, well, you're doing such a good job. I'm afraid they're going to say, well, you're doing such a good job, you paid for it.
Well, that's exactly...
I know I can be a little more, but that's another word.
The Director of Public Works indicated in his letter that I attached to the staff report, he cautioned against extending the roadway mitigation fee to state highways because of his fear and concern that the state would frequently depend on the county to build its projects, and if the funds weren't available, it could delay those projects. That was one of his concerns. So basically, I think what you'll be, what you're considering is, do you want to recommend using the mitigation fees in state highways, and then recognizing that if you do, you'd have to increase it? And we, I changed the recommendation to consider, after receiving the input from the Director of Public Works, I realized that there was, like everything, a point and a counterpoint to this one as well.
Exactly, that was the thing that sort of scared my soul for making a decision.
This for the council, so, just to clarify, the mitigation fee is not considered a tax, right?
No, it's not a tax. It has to be a fee, and it has to be based on a study which identifies the capital improvements that would be made, and what are the costs estimated for those capital improvements.
So actually, this body have the power to recommend to the Board of Supervisors to post this fee if we want to? Is that what, is that what this is going on right now?
Yeah, the Board has already adopted a mitigation, a road mitigation fee program, and we would need to make it clear is if, what would it, this is just a question whether this should be expanded to cover state highway improvements in addition to the local road improvements it currently serves.
Maybe a clarif, just an added clarification is, yes, we've had the County Board of Supervisors adopted the Fee of Mitigation Ordinance in 1991. Currently, a dollar thirty-five for every residential development, a dollar thirty-five per square foot for every residential development is collected as part of that program. There's also a larger fee for other types of uses per square foot. Traditionally, this has been used, originally this was used for maintenance, it is expanded into actually roadway improvements. Historically, it has always been used on county roads. The Director of Public Works informs that there are not excess monies at this point. If there was a policy decision to expand out to state roads, it would require increasing it, and in this case, it would be increasing it beyond the dollar thirty-five per square foot with an added addition, which would be the part is presumed to be used for the state roads, and as County Council is indicating, that would require a study because the state law requires a nexus between how much you charge and what the cost of the future development would be.
So, what, and I'm agreeing with Commissioner Wahlberger about this. I'd like to take this out, B, and then move that to as Task Seventeen, which we'll be talking about with running the, that trail and also the safe crossing.
Well, actually, that, the only part that will be the safe crossing, whatever, is that element of B that the Midcoast Council is asking that you also, that, B talks about use of mitigation fees. Midcoast Council was asking that you also add into B that those fees be used for the crossings, and that is what's covered in Seventeen, we'll look all, that night we'll look exclusively, or that day, look exclusively at underground crossings. However, B is still relevant for the other things, which is state highway improvements in general that are roadway related, and also, Midcoast Council was talking about matching funds for shuttle services. So basically, all I was saying was that element that dealt with the safe crossings, the... A multimodal trail, right. That, that element, we will be talking about that issue in January, and you could bring up funding again at that time, and we'll look at the different ways to approach that issue. However, B still remains, your board, I mean, your commission's still considering, in general, do you want to increase fees for roadway improvements on Highway One, vehicle roadway improvements, and also, the Midcoast Council's talking about matching, using mitigation fees as matching funds for a transportation alternatives program.
Well, as I understand it, B is essentially rather innocuous because it just says, consider increasing the fees. Consider, which I think is excellent. Now, I, my problem, as I agree philosophically with Commissioner Nobles, it's a hundred percent, everybody should pay their way. In other words, nobody should get a free ride, but we need improvements in, what do you call, the structure, infrastructure in the coast side. There's no doubt about that. But I'm just be having this, in here or somewhere, on page thirteen, it says between 1991 and 2000, we collected the following amounts for public road reconstruction in the Midcoast area. And if I look at that directly, the collections were something like one million, five hundred and five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars. And I, I'm, here we're spending all of this time on this and raising the fees, et cetera, but it seems to me that's a pittance. That's really not worth, hardly worth consideration. I mean, you can, in certain areas, you can, you can't even put a traffic light for that amount of money. Or maybe you could put two of them, or three of them. In other words, I'm not making fun of this, but this seems to be, we're making a mountain out of a molehill here. And it's a very important molehill here in business, and you cost you another ten, five or ten or fifteen thousand dollars. I'm not a businessman, I was just a poor teacher, so therefore, I don't know not whatever I speak in this area also, really to admit it. But, fine, I can say yes, I can understand, let's go, let's consider this. I have spoken enough on this particular subject.
I have a philosophical problem with that, because there's a mechanism for funding our state highways, and we all contribute to that already. And so then to put in these local mitigation fees on top of that, it seems like it's a little bit inappropriate.
What would be more interesting would be to consider raising the fee for county roads.
Yep. Oh, I can. I wonder, I wonder if we might, it might be appropriate to have a motion approved. I'd move it, we just break it down, they're doing some things. Then I'd move approval of Task Seven A. Does anyone think we should do that? I don't have anything to say about that, can we vote? I'm not the chairman, this is... Aye. It's not got the mic.
Let's take a vote on, let's do it one at a time. Point by point. So we have a motion on Seven A. And we have a second. As it stands, is that correct?
As it stands. Oh, yes.
Aye.
Aye. Now, we, so that's, we have that?
On Seven B, I think that the point that the, to the extent that funds are fungible, if we start funding state highways locally, the state may feel less the need to spend money here. I'm skeptical of that. Certainly willing to continue to consider it, but if, if, if as part of our cleanup, we're going to have, cleanup day, so called, we're going to have better information on this, we can come back to it. It's not clear to me if we will at that point. I'm not, I don't have any, but I, I don't really feel a motion is appropriate. We can consider it if we have better information at a later time, but, but it doesn't seem to mean that we have information that's compelling enough to pursue this, pursue this further, unless we have new information from forward.
Go ahead. Can a motion be made that?
Can a motion be made that we consider B as a, for future, uh, meeting? That is, that is all for the last meeting of this OCP?
Well, if there's new information to be brought to bear, I'd certainly, I think, I wonder if it's just appropriate of direction, staff, that it is the sense of the commission that if there's new information to be brought in bear to this, we come back to it as part of the cleanup at the end of this process, if there isn't, I would propose no further action on this. Well, okay, I'd make a motion with that effect, then.
Aye. Yeah, let us consider C. C is not...
On C, we're talking about projects that generate less than one peak hour...
We're talking about projects that generate less than a thousand, of less than one peak hour trips that are not exempt from CECL. What are we talking about?
The CK, um... Okay, the CK guidelines require that for development that adds more than a hundred trips at any time the peak hour, that you have, either you require transportation demand measures, which TDMs, I'm going to go to that in a second, you collect road mitigation fees, or you pay a one-time fee of twenty thousand per peak hour trip, because you, basically, the alleged, the requirement is to fully mitigate the impact associated with those trips out of one of those three ways. And currently, it's for developments over one hundred. The, if, the way C is written, the proposal is that locally, within this county, in the, in the Midcoast, you would be requiring the same thing for developments that are less than one hundred, with the exception of those projects that are except, exempt from CECL. The projects that are exempt from CECL are CECL family residences and commercial establishments that are twenty-five hundred square feet floor area or less. And those are the two that I knew of right off the top of my head. So basically, I guess in practice, we'd be talking about maybe between twenty and a hundred trips, or something like that. The, just to remind, refresh your memory what TDMs are, examples include establishing a shuttle service, subsidizing transit for employees, charging employees your parking, establishing carpool or vanpooling program, having compressed work week, providing bicycle storage facilities and showers, establishing a daycare program, things like that. But what you would have to do is, if you adopted a recommended C, and a proposal came in for, let's say, a new use, a new development that generated forty new peak hour trips, then you would have to mitigate the impact of those forty peak hour trips through one of those three ways. One of them would be TDM measures, which I've just gone over, given the examples of. The other one is paying a one-time fee of twenty thousand dollars per peak trip, or collecting road mitigation fees, and that's a kind of unspecified, maybe, Mark, is there anything elaborating on? So, basically, you're, what you're considering now is a category that's less than a hundred, but greater than the exempt development.
I think we should do that, require that, because it's a matter of basic fairness, and also, so much of the growth would escape the, with the mitigation fees, because the problem most of it is below.
That's true, but keep, bear in mind, yes, that's the theory behind it, is the cumulative impacts on traffic from a small development would be, because it's cumulative, would be great when all added together, it was obvious. However, keep in mind, with the exemption, not exempt from CECL, it does exempt the largest contributor in the Midcoast, which is residential dwellings.
Frankly, that's what, what disturbs me about it, that it does not get to the heart of the issue, which is the impact of residential development, and it has some, some risk of discouraging business development, which is one of the things which we have been beat over the head with again and again and again, is something that the, this particular area would like to see. Probably especially at that scale, rather than at the hundred peak hour trips of base scale.
Well, you're arguing against it?
I would, I would argue that we don't do this.
I would follow footsteps of Commissioner Wahlberger, I would argue against that. I would like to see more information on this, where I really have some, some great scenarios that I could really understand, because something, make it simple, so that I can understand. I have a business of two thousand six hundred square feet. How can I, what, what would this cost me? Or how could, how could I be nailed with this? For instance, if I have to pay a fee of twenty thousand dollars in mitigation, I'm not going to, yeah, per trip, per, per, but how am I going to pass it off? I'm not going to pay it. If I have customers coming in to me, I'm going to pass it on to them, which means I have to have higher costs, higher prices. Is that going to make me competitive? Or am I going to lose the competitive edge because I'm paying all these fees? And that's the thing that scares me.
I would imagine, I'd be interested in what staff would comment, comment staff would have about this. With a larger business, I would imagine that type of one-time fee is amortized over a long period of time. With a smaller business, it's the ability to amortize something like that, practicality may be minimal. And, you know, I certainly would be, I'm certainly open to considering this, but I do feel, I'd be interested, maybe I should stop, first, do you have any comment on, on the practical effects of this? Like, again, the larger business would just have the ability to say, fine, we're going to put this through our own capital cost, we have a startup expense of X many hundred thousand dollars, we're paying this mitigation fee, and we'll amortize it over twenty years, and that's that. But a smaller business would have a hard time dealing with that.
What I would recommend is, if you desire considering this, that maybe we stylize it, that, that the business, or the development would have to establish transportation, transportation demand management measures, and not have the fee involved at all. And remember, I had given examples of these TDMs, like establishing a carpooling program, or subsidizing transit for employees, or having a flexible compressed work week, or having bicycle storage, and then on a case-by-case basis, we can look at the proposal and determine what combinations of TDMs would be most related to the proposal.
Well, for purposes of discussion, I'd be willing to somehow...
I would, I would. So we knock off the fee, and use the other TDMs?
You mean, we've discussed something, what, before us?
Basically, the recommendation has always been to use one element of the CK guidelines, which is the TDMs and not the fees.
Not that we couldn't, came before us, but we just got ourselves into a raver situation by reading this a little different than it was written. Well, I guess we got it.
Yes, we vote for the second roll of favor.
Aye.
Last task, D.
Now, what does this study entail? Study expands the shovel service. But will it accomplish, what will it accomplish?
I guess, I guess I'm going to respond to this one. There was, in the workshops that were held, there was a request that there be some consideration about expanding transit service between the coast side and the bayside. And there are also...
about expanding transit service between the coast side and the bayside, and there also was some concern about expanding shuttle service up and down the MidCoast between various communities to augment the lack of, of school bus service. There's a couple of different shuttle programs that are available in the county, one through CK. It's called local service programs. There are four cities recently received funds through CK with matching funds to establish their own local shuttle services. And then there is the congestion man, or the, excuse me, the, the congestion relief agency, what is the name? The Alliance, the Alliance for Congestion Relief. They also fund shuttle programs. And so, there could be some effort to explore whether or not something like this could be set up in the MidCoast. That's essentially what the recommendation is.
Let's do it. Sounds great. It's not going to cost us a fortune, is it? One doesn't know.
Well, it's, no, it's the, the CK program is funded by CK, and, but there is some local contribution, and the same with the, the same with the Alliance programs.
Mark, does this system, if we put it into effect, does it have to essentially pay for itself, or no? It's funded by?
This is, it's like.
So, okay, let's do that. Let's get a, let's, let's finish this up. We're not spending money here. All right, let's get a, what do you call it? Let's get a motion on the floor on this one. We agree with this?
I agree with the, the next part of the study, the shuttle service, the bayside.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anything further? Any other information that we, you know? Well, do we have a motion to dismiss?
Motion for adjournments. All right. I want to thank everybody tonight for helping us, so in trouble we had, thank you kindly.